The recording will be made available on our district website as soon as it's possible. Very limited space is being provided here at the D A O. We're obviously utilizing proper medical screening questions and social distancing. Online public input is also encouraged and welcome. A link for this is located on our district website. Tonight, we had one public input and that has been assigned to the appropriate executive director to answer. Our mission statement. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with their surrounding community to be successful in today and tomorrow's society. I'm on call to meeting to order. It's roughly six thirty-one. Today's date is October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. We're located here at the D A O and some people are remotely. Les, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Good. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Les. Could you now call roll, please?
You know, I have to wait. The last, the person who's saying it is behind me a bit. And so you kind of, you know, that you have to wait or you sure it up. Jeff Polrize.
Here.
Monica Segura Schwartz.
Here.
Al Dolgren.
Here. I'm here, last time, here remotely from my home in St. Wendell Township because
All right.
I don't have it.
But get well. Natalie Ringsmuth.
I am here remotely, coming to you from my office in Shock Rapids.
All right. Zach Dorhold.
Present at the D A O.
Les Green is present at the D A O. Did I miss Shannon Hawes?
Yep, I'm here at the district office.
All right. Also, present somewhere in cyberspace is Superintendent Willie Jett and Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Dr. Marcia Beisch, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education, Dr. Lori Putnam, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, Lori Poche, Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education, Carol Potter, Executive Director of Research, Evaluation, and Assessment, oh, Assessment and Enrollment, Dr. Sylvia Huff, Executive Director of Community Education, Adam Holm, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services, Amy Scalerud, Executive Director of Operations, Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Human Resources, Tracy Flynn Bowe, Director of Community Engagement and Communications, Tammy Deland, Director of Equity Services, Ellen Stewart, Director of Technology, Ryan Cox, Executive Assistant, Mary Kuesterman.
Thank you, Les.
Think that's everybody? Good.
Appreciate it. At this time, I'm looking to look at promotion for approval of tonight's agenda.
I move second.
All right. Les, could you take roll, please?
Jeff Polrize.
Yes.
Monica Segura Schwartz.
Yes.
Al Dolgren.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth.
Yes.
Zach Dorhold.
Yes.
Les Green is yes.
Next up on our agenda is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the board routinely adopts without debate. Any single member of the board may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. The full text of items can be found at the end of the agenda. Tonight, we have item A, it's approval of minutes for the meetings we had on September sixteenth and October seventh. Item B is approval of payment of bills and other financial transactions in the amount of three million, four hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine and eleven cents. Item C is approval of personnel staff changes. Item D is acceptance of grant awards, grant awards and donations. Item E is quarterly expenditures for board members. Item F is bid award for the D A O HVAC and roofing project. Item F. Item G is schedule special board meeting to canvass the election results. Item H is a bid rescind for the sale of MacBook Air computers. Item A is a bid award for the sale of MacBook Air computers. Looking for motion to accept tonight's consent agenda as recorded.
Yes, I would ask that we remove item D and vote on that separately and I'll recuse myself. But I will move that we, that we approve the consent agenda minus item D.
All right. Any further discussion?
I second.
Second out? Okay. All right. Les, would you want to take roll for items A through I, please?
Yes.
Zach Gilroy.
Yes.
Les Green is yes. Jeff Polrize.
Yes, and I meant A through I minus P, so let's clarify on that. But yes.
Monica Segura Schwartz.
Yes.
Al Dolgren.
Yes.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
All right, Al, what do you got going with item B?
No, it was item D is in dog.
Oh, dog, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear.
That's grant towards donations and I personally have been in there, so.
All right.
So I'm recusing myself from that.
I approve item D.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Take roll one more time, Les.
Les Green is yes. Monica Segura Schwartz.
Yes.
Al Dolgren, I'm sorry.
I'm recusing.
Shannon Hawes.
Yes.
Natalie Ringsmuth.
Yes.
Yeah. Make sure everybody has your mics off if you're not talking, that's the problem. Uh, no, you haven't. Call me in, we're good. Yes. All right. Enough said on the consent agenda, we move on to our information items. First one is item A, it's North Junior High School presentation. It's going to be presented by Principal Brian Nutter. Go ahead, Brian.
Good evening. Greetings, school board members, Superintendent Jett, Assistant Superintendent for Cabinet. Most importantly, importantly, greetings, community members of District seven forty-two. My name is Brian Nutter and I'm the principal at North Junior High. This is my second year at North. Next slide, please. We're going to start tonight's presentation on North with our Be the Difference video. Before Ryan clicks play, I just want to say thank you to Tammy, Carissa, and Ryan from the communications team, who I think did an absolutely fabulous job with this video. So Ryan, if you'll please click play for me.
Well, our S E L program here at North, what we're here to do is we're supporting the students. We understand there are a lot of things that affect the students outside of the school. We want to improve that when they're inside of the schools. We each have kids that we recognize or are connected to and we check in with them for the school day to make sure that it's a positive start of the school day. I look at behaviors that the kid is telling me something. They just are not properly instructed on how to say that. They act out, they yell, they stomp, but they're telling me something, there's a need there. I have the luxury of pulling them to the side and kind of like talk to them as a one-on-one. I have a picture of myself when I was in fifth grade so I could kind of let them know that I once was a kid. You know, it takes time and again, I meet them not under the best of circumstances, but I make the best of the opportunity. So everyone makes a mistake. It's all a success story as long as they can learn from it. And that's what we all do, you know, we're not only teaching them the A B Cs, but we're teaching them how to be members of society and this school is a community.
Probably the most important part of my job right now is preventing as much disease as possible. Disinfecting, keeping desks six feet apart, making sure there's markings and stuff on floors. And we also clean hotspots, door frames, door handles, sharpeners, anything that's hands-on. Really more focused of those type of things, you know, because it's very important.
Yeah, I think they're adjusting pretty well with the mask wearing. There hasn't been a big issue with the kids refusing to wear their mask. Everyone's pretty compliant. We're seeing just behaviors being a lot better in the lunchroom. So it does make the lunchroom a lot quieter and I think in that sense it is more peaceful when you're having your lunch because then you can kind of decompress a little bit and take a break from your day before you go back into class. We're a pretty positive bunch and I think we all work really well together. A lot of kids we know by name. We get nice drawings from kids and thank yous to the lunch ladies and stuff which we just got one yesterday and it was so cute because they had the lunchroom, the tables all drawn up with the little yellow markers on it and bags and everything on the cart and it's just really cute. It kind of warms your heart so you know that you're doing something already two weeks into the school year and you're already getting thank you cards.
Seven forty-two, be the difference.
Seven forty-two, be the difference.
Seven forty-two, be the difference.
All right, welcome back. I hope you enjoyed the video. I want to thank Bill, David, and Alyssa for doing that video for us at North and then share with the board and the community some of why I selected those three staffing groups to highlight them being the difference at North. And so the three staffing groups I selected were our S E L team represented by Bill Cruz, one of our deans. He's the sixth grade dean this year. Our custodians represented by David Gasperlin and then our nutritional services staff, our cooks represented by Alyssa Woxman. And the reason I wanted to highlight these staffing groups in my Be the Difference video is they're often underrepresented staff members, but so critical to what we do in schools each day. When we think about the environment that we're currently working in, providing meals for students in schools and outside of schools, cleaning and sanitizing, you know, due to COVID and things like that. And then providing a safe and welcoming environment for our kids is a task that the social emotional learning team and the custodians and our cooks and nutrition services staff do day in and day out and don't often get recognized for it. So I wanted to take the opportunity this year in my Be the Difference video to highlight those people that go above and beyond every day to make the difference in our students' lives, both improving their academic lives, but also their social emotional lives. Next slide, Ryan. So briefly, I'll go over some of North's demographics and I won't spend too much time on this. Board members, I know you received some of this information ahead of time. As of this morning, North had an enrollment of eight hundred and forty students. Of those eight hundred and forty students, one hundred and sixty of them are D L A students. And so as you look at the highlighted numbers on the bottom of the screen for this current school year, you see the representative breakdown by racial subgroup. So American Indian, we've got one percent, Asian, five percent. Hispanic is ten percent, Pacific Islander, zero percent. Black at thirty-nine percent, white at thirty-six percent, and two or more races, ten percent. And what you'll notice here is there's really no significant trending information over the last three years as far as huge gains or losses in any one of the subgroups. Next slide, please. When we look at this slide and our some more student demographics, this slide may be a little bit more telling about what the North community is like and the students that we serve. So you'll notice that we have a free and reduced lunch population of seventy-two percent of our students. That's about double the statewide average of thirty-five percent. And then twenty-two percent of our students receive special education services and this is about six percent more than the state average of sixteen point five percent. And then twenty-eight percent of our students are receiving support for English language learning and that represents an increase of seven percent over last year. And so that's really the only trend that we're seeing here as far as an increase or decrease. And I can't speak to why we have a seven percent increase this year over the last two years. A small portion of that increase might have to do with a new program that we are offering at North, but I don't think it would account for the seven percent. And I'll speak a little bit more to that later in the presentation. Next slide. So who we are at North. What I want the community to know is that we are a P B I S exemplar school. That's a positive behavior interventions and supports. And as part of that, we have characteristics that we identified being safe, kind, and responsible. And what you'll notice here is I've selected a couple of things that I would like to feature related to our P B I S efforts. One of which is our P B I S matrix that we have redone for our student learning expectations this year as they relate to being in a distance learning model. So we started the school year under hybrid, which meant half of our students were home every day. And now we're currently all distance learning and so these things are coming into play every day. So we adapted our safe, kind, and responsible to show our students what it means to be safe, kind, and responsible when they're at home and when they're online and when they're interacting with their peers and with their teachers in a virtual environment. So you'll see some of that here in this slide. I also wanted to highlight the kind aspect of our safe, kind, and responsible. And so you'll notice there's a picture there of a young man standing in front of a sign that we have in the entryway at North. If you've been to our school since last March, the sign went up just before we went to distance learning in the spring. And there's a small sign just to the left of the letter K there that says be the I in kind. And so periodically, students and staff and community members will stand in front of that sign and we take their picture. And I would encourage any of you that are listening in, if you happen to be at North and would like to have your picture taken in front of the kind sign, stop by my office and I'd be more than happy to take your picture in front of that because we encourage all of our students to be the I in kind. And then lastly on that slide there, I just want to highlight we have approximately a hundred and fifteen staff and that's across all staffing groups. Next slide. Thanks, Ryan. Continuing with the theme of kind, I wanted to share a heartwarming story or several heartwarming stories with our board and community members. What's represented here on this slide is a project that was done in our eighth grade technology course. It's a year-long technology course offered by our tech teacher, Sarah Loudenbach. This was one of their first lab assignments of the school year. It's an assignment that the students do to kind of get oriented to the machinery, safety, things like that. And what the assignment was is the students would create a laptop stand for a teacher that they are grateful for or thankful for and they would write that teacher a message or a note explaining to the teacher why they were giving them a laptop stand that they made in their technology class. And so I do realize that the text there on the screen is quite small. So I am going to take this opportunity to just read a couple of those to you and I hope they will warm your heart as much as they do mine and just show you a little bit about who our students are and who our staff when it comes to being kind and thoughtful to others. So the first one is the upper right corner. These are all eighth grade students. So it says, "I wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Mitchell. You really influenced me to work harder even when I don't want to. Also, in my opinion, you aren't like other teachers. You help students get their priorities straight. I hope you're doing good and thank you for being so thoughtful." And so that's the young lady that's pictured in the top middle there and she made her laptop stand for Mrs. Mitchell, who this year is teaching in D L A. So this student didn't get to give the laptop stand to Mrs. Mitchell in person, but she did leave it in the office for Mrs. Mitchell, who picked it up and was very grateful to receive it. The next one I'll read, it says, "Hey, Mrs. Lukens, you've done so much for me while I'm here at North. I appreciate everything you've done to help me these last few years for me and for my family. I couldn't thank you enough, really. You have stuck with me through everything. You're one of the most caring and considerate teachers I've ever had and any seventh grader is lucky to have you as their teacher. I wish you could stick with me forever throughout my school years. I hope you know that if you need any help with anything, I will always be here. You turned me into a better version of myself that no one has ever seen before. You showed me who I really am and I wouldn't change that for the world. Thank you for everything," signed a North eighth grade student. And then I'll just read one more quickly. It's kind of a long one, so bear with me, but I think this one, I really, this one hits home with me because it's a, it's a letter from a student who came to the school last year partway through the school year. And she described a little bit about a challenge of coming into a new school and a teacher who fully embraced her, showed her kindness, and showed her care. And now that teacher has been rewarded with a very kind letter from the student and a laptop stand. So it says, "Hi, my name is a North grade, eighth grade student and I'm going to tell you about a teacher that made an impact on my life. That teacher that has impacted my life is Mrs. Laumeyer. I feel this way because she helped me a lot when I was new last year and she also helped me improve my writing and reading skills. I am very grateful for this because these are very important and useful things for high school, college, and maybe even a future job. I also have known her for quite a few years and she never, she never minds me or my sister asking for help. If I didn't have her for a teacher, I probably wouldn't be as confident in my writing and reading abilities as I am now. She was also there for anyone when they needed a hug or someone to talk to and trust me when I say she's pretty good at it. It was really hard for me to switch schools in the middle of the year and I think without Mrs. Laumeyer, it would have been even harder. For example, she was a familiar face to me, so I knew if I needed anything, I could just go to her. If I needed help with an assignment, she would try to help me to the best of her abilities. She would even help me outside of school if I messaged her. I could, I could continue on, but I sadly don't have all day. So those are the main reasons I believe Mrs. Laumeyer impacted my life." And a whole classroom full of eighth grade students shared similar stories with teachers who have impacted their lives while at North. I felt like I had to share those heartwarming stories with the board members in our community because I feel like that's what North is really about. Next slide, Ryan. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to continue to talk about the impact that our S E L team has had on students. And we got a little bit of a taste of that in our Be the Difference video when Bill Cruz was talking about what he does as a member of our S E L team. He's, again, he's the sixth grade dean. I just want to briefly highlight what our S E L team is, who's on that team, and what they do at North. And then I want to share with you a testimonial video from one of our eighth grade students. So the S E L team is the social emotional learning team. And again, at North, they're more affectionately known as the S E L team. They are comprised of the three deans. We have one at each grade level. We have a social worker on the team who runs our Eagle Connect program. We also have one behavior resource specialist and then we have a special education behavior resource specialist. And then we have five behavior support specialists. And also, we have adopted our V C S S, our bilingual communication support specialist, Delmar, into our S E L team as well. So we have a very robust team of staff that are dedicated to the social emotional learning of our students at North. Some of the things these people do are they are the first ones to greet the children in the morning as they arrive to school. They are at all of the doors greeting students as they walk in. They're on their school buses as they're screening them prior to coming into school each day. They're the first hello. They're typically the last goodbye of the day. So they're doing bus duty in the, in the morning and the afternoon. They're doing lunch duty. They're doing hall supervision. They staff and man our behavior reset room. They staff our in-school suspension room, which I am happy to say we haven't had a need for yet this year. But they do so many things at our school that amount to them making connections with each of our students. I would say that these staff members know our students better than the majority of the staff members in the buildings because their jobs revolve around interacting with our students and providing for their social emotional learning. They're the first line of defense when it comes to behavior issues. If a teacher has a behavior concern in the classroom that they're not able to address adequately in the classroom, they will call the hotline at North. More affectionately known to our staff is seven thousand eight. I think some people have it on speed dial. But our S E L staff members are the first people to respond in those situations and so they are well-versed in de-escalation. They are some of the most caring people you could ever meet and I would love for each of you to, at some point in time, if you haven't been to North, to meet some of our wonderful S E L staff to come on by when appropriate and safe to meet these people who do great work each day to support our students in and out of the classroom. And so to kind of boil that down into one short minute-long clip from Jamie, who is an eighth grade student at North who had some struggles in her sixth grade year and turned things around and she credits that to our S E L team. And so she provided a short video. I think she was a little nervous, so don't hold that against her. The content of the video is, again, absolutely amazing and a great testimony to the work that our S E L team is doing at North each and every day. And so with that, Ryan, if you could click play for us, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jamie. I am in eighth grade this year. I have been going to North for three years now. First thing I want to say is there's a lot of amazing staff at North Junior High. So back when I was in sixth grade, it was really pretty one of the hardest years I could ever experience. I had many struggles and I was also having problems with the law enforcement, which led me not to care about school and every time I went to school, I would cause problems. As my behavior got worse, it got the attention of my principal, Mr. Okerlin, and my counselor, Mr. Shelsa. They assigned me to an S E L staff. I worked with Ms. Sands for sixth and seventh grade, learning how to stay calm and be mindful and how to handle situations appropriately and also to manage my anger. The S E L, S E L team at North Junior High helped me want to go to school and stay positive. Some of the people that have helped me throughout the years I have been at North is Ms. Sands, Ms. Kessler, Mr. Okerlin, Ms. Courtney, and Ms. Kaylee. Thank you for hearing my little story.
Thank you, Jamie. And I will not doubt that there are many other students who could share similar stories. And you're probably wondering, why, why am I talking so much about our S E L team? And I'll just say, Ryan, if you could go to the next slide, please. Climate is important to us at North and it's important to me as a principal. I want to do everything I possibly can to make sure that the climate and the culture of our school is welcoming and caring to all of our students and staff. And a key piece of that puzzle and increasing our positive school climate and culture is our social emotional learning team. And so you'll see pictures of some of them here. Again, it's a, it's a pretty robust team, so that not all of them are pictured, but many of them are. And some of them are our staff that have, the pictures are obviously from last year because they're not wearing masks. And so some of them have moved on to other roles. A couple of our S E L staff are now deans in the, in the district. And so that's, that's another amazing testament to the work that they're, they're doing with our kids at North each day. So what you see on this slide here is that our, our school climate is improving in the eyes of our students. And so the first one says, "My teachers care about me." And seventy-four percent of the students at North last year, when they completed the student survey, said that their teachers do care about them. They agree or strongly agree that that's the case. That's a huge win. And then the next question there, the second one, is "My teacher makes me feel good about myself." And sixty-five percent of North students said that they either agree or strongly agree that their teachers make them feel good about themselves. Increasing positive climate and culture at North is one of our school-wide SIP goals as well. And we have set a goal this year to have that when the students complete the survey this year, we're hoping that both of those questions will be answered at a rate of seventy-five percent or higher for agree or strongly agree. I don't think that's setting the bar too high, but it's going to be challenging for us given the continually changing academic environment that we've been put in. But I need you all to know that we're doing everything we possibly can to maintain the connections with our students, whether they are with us in the building doing hybrid learning or they're at home doing distance learning. That social emotional team that I've been bragging about for a little while now, each one of them has taken one-third of each grade level class. So they each are responsible for about anywhere from eighty-five to a hundred and five students, depending upon the grade level class. And they are making connections with these kids weekly, sending them surveys to see what kind of support they might need, checking in on them to just see how they're feeling. And then when they are getting feedback from kids that maybe they're feeling anxious or sad, it gives our staff member a point of reference to reach out and say, "Hey, I noticed you mentioned in your response to my schoolagy message that you were sad. Do you want to talk about that? Or you mentioned that you're needing some additional support in math classes. Is there anything I can do to help you with that or to facilitate the additional help you might need?" So we're hoping with this extra emphasis placed on student contact now that we're in distance learning and we've assigned a third of each class to each one of our SEL staff members, that we're going to see great benefit. And our students are going to be able to answer these questions come the end of the year that they do feel cared about when they're at North and when they're at home doing distance learning as well. Next slide, Ryan. A little bit more about how we're doing. So this is attendance data from the last two school years. So no current attendance data on the slide, but on the left here, you'll see that attendance last year, surprisingly to me, attendance was quite well last year, even considering the end of the year going to distance learning because of COVID. So no amazing losses or gains in the attendance column when we compare the, the two years. But I will say that I, I will be interested to see how our attendance data looks this year. I'll be very upfront and say that we have been struggling thus far with participation when students have been at home during the hybrid learning days. And when I say struggle, I'm saying up to around twenty, twenty percent of the students that should be logging in and participating in class have not been. But I do think that we're going to see improvement with that now that we've put some extra emphasis on connecting with our kids individually and using our non-licensed staff, the SEL team, to make those connections daily when we see that kids are not logging into their courses when they should be. When we look at the behavior data here on the right side of the slide, you can see that it looks like there's, there's tremendous improvement year to year when we look at the behavior comparison data from September of last year through October ninth, both years. And part of it is, of course, there are about a third to a half of the students in the school building. And I think the other part of it is, I, I would like to think that the, the climate and culture at North has improved tremendously. I'm sure you have been around to other district buildings as we started this school year. And I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's the changing environment, but students appear to be much more calm this year. So we have had a very good year at North thus far. As far as behavior goes, very, very few behavior referrals as compared to the start of last school year. So I think we're doing great in, in that venue. And then, of course, distance learning is, is, you know, a changing dynamic. And we're not seeing much behavior with distance learning, and the behavior we are seeing is typically been students logging into Google Meets that are not their course. And so that's, that's something that I know all the schools that are doing distance learning are working on right now. Next slide, please. All right. One of the last things I'd like to talk about tonight is a new program that we have at North that is specifically for our multilingual students who are new to country, new to English. And so these are students that are classified as REELs, which stands for Recently Arrived English Learners, or SLIF students, which is Students With Limited or Interrupted Formal Education. So these students typically are scoring at the 1.0 level or slightly above when they take the, the access assessment. And so these students, as the, as the newcomer title says, have very little English that they come to the school with. So this program is essentially a school within a school program. The students are in one of two classrooms, five periods of the day. We do have one main EL teacher who teaches the students the, the bulk of the school day. And then we have a second one who teaches two of the courses, two of the five courses. And then each student will have one period of the day where they will take PE and music. So this program, it is a more intensive program to help them acquire beginning English skills so that we can put them into the, the mainstream EL program that serves the rest of our students. The, the program is a citywide program, so there are students from both North and South in this program. Right now, there are currently eighteen students enrolled in the program. And they break down to thirteen from the North attendance area and five from the South attendance area. The way this program will work is students will enter the program, and when they are able to demonstrate basic English skills, they will exit the program into the, the traditional EL program. And so we anticipate most students will be in the program somewhere between six months and twenty-four months. And so that's kind of a preview of things to come. Again, as I mentioned, this is brand new this year, so we've been doing it for about a month and a half. It's also intended to help students become acculturized to the school and school system of the United States, and also to give them some instruction in basic core classes that they may, they may not have otherwise had if they were just focusing on English. And then lastly, and important, is part of this program is trying to give the students some skills in developing their native language literacy. So there has been a lot of research that says students will learn the English language better if they also receive some instruction in their, their native language. So I'm pleased to say that we do have a Somali EL teacher who is instructing those. We have five Somali students of the eighteen that are in the program, and they all have a Somali first language literacy course that they're taking with Bashir. The, the main teacher for this program is bilingual Spanish, English. And so she, she's able to provide first language literacy to twelve of the students who are Spanish-speaking. And then there was one outlier who is a Chinese-speaking first language student. Fortunately for us, North has a Chinese immersion program. And as of this week, that student has been played in our Chinese immersion social studies class for one period. So that, that student will also get some first language literacy in our Chinese immersion program. And this is That's fine, Ryan. You can go ahead and, and play it. This is from a PBIS assembly at the end of last year before we went to distance learning. All right. That's just a taste of some of the things we like to have at North. The, the school experience is, is much more than, than just the, the academics. And it's, it's really about the whole child. And what I want to come through here in this slide is we like our students to have fun when they're at school because students who have fun at school enjoy being there. And being there is, is the first step in making sure that we're preparing our young people to, to go on and do great things in the future. So just a, a couple of explanations on the pictures here, so you know some of the things that we're doing for fun at North. The young men pictured on the left of the screen, that was at their robotics tournament last year. They're the platyphe. They won a state award for energy. And you might be able to guess why they won that award just by looking at their, their platyphe costumes. If you had an opportunity to go to the competition, you could not have missed these guys. They were everywhere. So the, the energy award was well-deserving for them. In the upper right corner, we have a picture from one of our sixth grade field trips. Our sixth grade team does a really good job of integrating students into the, the middle school experience. And so they have several field trips planned throughout the year where the students are able to do some team building, come together and have some fun. And so that was the snow tubing and skiing picture. Students had an absolute blast, and the staff that went also had a great time skiing and tubing. And then the bottom right picture was the, the first dance under my tenure. I swore as a principal I would never do a school dance. It's, it's been something that as an assistant principal in the past and as a teacher, chaperoning dances is one of those things that you come to think, ah, they might be a little bit more trouble than they're worth. But I have to tell you, we did a dance as a PBIS reward last year for our students who had good attendance. And it was a huge success. To date, in my twenty years of educational experience and too many dances to count, it was the best one by far. The students were amazing. I couldn't believe, I didn't think middle schoolers would get up and dance in front of each other, and they did, and they all had a blast. It was DJed by one of our SEL team members, who the kids absolutely love and adore. And it was a huge success, and we plan to do it again as soon as we're able. So with that, that concludes my presentation.
All right. Tonight, we're going to start off with Natalie and then Al, and then we'll work in, in-house. So Natalie, do your first. Do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah. So thanks, Principal Nutter. North is one of my schools, as Apollo is the other one. And that's super easy for me because as Principal Nutter knows, I have a sixth grade girl at North, and then two of my kids are at Apollo. And her transition to North has just been absolutely amazing this year. And even with COVID and all of the changes, I can really see in the, those, the video from the eighth grade girl and as well with your SEL team video, that really, what they're saying is exactly true. She said that she feels safe, she feels cared for. She feels like nobody's going to let her get away with not pushing herself, especially her math teacher, with, which Principal Nutter and I talked about. And, you know, they really want her to strive to be the best that she can be. And that is why my kids are in District 742, because that's the reality of our experience. I loved when you shared with, that Bill has a picture of himself as a fifth grader. As a former sixth, third, and fifth grade teacher, that is so important for, for kids to sing, think about the fact that we also used to be sixth, third graders. So I just love to see that. And certainly, in that video, when it says that our schools are a little community, North is definitely a little community, and that community extends into Apollo as the kids graduate. I was really excited to understand that with the staff of one fifteen and, and students at eight forty, that we're really in the building, across the building, having one staff for every seven or eight students. I mean, I just think that that's one of the strengths that North has and that, that we're having adults that know these kids and that are with these kids and love these kids. And that makes us so successful. So thanks for sharing that. I was going to ask about the climate survey, which you put in your, in your slide deck. I mean, that's amazing. From 2018 for fifty-three percent for my teachers care about me to seventy-four percent in 2019. That's a huge jump and something we should really be proud of. And to know that we're striving for seventy-five percent in both those questions is, is really great, and I think doable as well. I was also going to ask, it's like you read my notes, Principal Nutter, so stop that. Also going to ask about the 2019 Access 2.0 Accountability Data. Concerned, of course, as I'm sure you are as well, that we do see that twenty percent gap between our North students in their progress made by ELs toward their target versus the state. And so to hear about that new program that you're starting and just to understand that we do see a seven percent change upward in our EL students is important for us to know as a board that we still are seeing increasing numbers of EL students in our community. The, the targets that we're talking about here, when it says here, ELs meeting targets. So it's targets for growth, right? Is it in that one, the Access 2.0, is it say, is it teachers and students that set those bars for growth that we're not meeting all of right now?
So I can take that if that's okay.
Thank you, Dr. Huff.
Thank you.
So the targets are set by the state. And they are based on the student's initial proficiency level, the first time they take Access 2.0. So if the first time a student takes the access as, as a kindergartner, whatever their proficiency level is as a kindergartner, the state sets a trajectory specifically for a kindergarten student at a proficiency level of two point four, or whatever it is, and sets targets along the way in terms of how long it should take them to become proficient. If a student, that trajectory would look different than for a student who first takes access as a fifth grader and has a proficiency level of three. And so they're individualized targets that are set by the state. And then for the subsequent access tests, the students' scores on those subsequent tests are measured against what the targets were set at to determine whether or not they made progress as determined by the state. And so as you mentioned, for North, for example, in that slide, during the 2019 school year, nineteen percent of this EL student are making progress towards their target, or meeting their target, excuse me. And we do not have 2020 accountability data because the state did not compute any accountability data and release any accountability data this year, which is why we don't have any of the accountability data for MCAs for access. We can only provide what their scores are and their proficiency levels, but none of the accountability calculations for progress were created or formulated by the state this year.
Yeah, that's really great to know because I was wondering, you know, STAR data seems to be so heavily driven by teacher and student working together to decide what their goals are. And it seems like then for access, that it's not as malleable, that it's pretty much like a, here's what you should be doing sort of a thing versus individualized to each student. Am I saying that correctly, Sylvia or Dr. Huff?
Hats on you again. Yes, in the sense that the state sets it based off of an algorithm. So grade level, initial proficiency, here's the expectation versus what you were just describing in terms of the teacher knowing the whole child and taking other factors into consideration and establishing those targets together for other measures.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Dr. Huff. That's, that's good to know. Speaking of that STAR data, it seems like according to the data packet that the reading scores are staying more consistent between fall and winter. And, but we're having a harder time in math. We were having a harder time in math originally. So I see more growth there than I do in the reading, and maybe that's just because there was more catch-up to do there. But it's very interesting to, to see these, these data snapshots and then, of course, wonder where we're going to be this year after, after COVID and not being able to, to take those snaps for a while. I would say, what is the most, I'm just going to ask Principal Nutter one question, and then I'll be done. What's the most surprising thing that you found this year with hybrid and distance learning?
Great question. I think the attendance thing is probably what is surprising me most. The thing that I was the most proud of last year when we went to distance learning in the spring was that North was the school on top for attendance. We were reaching out to our kids every day, making sure they were getting on to Schoology and, and getting some work done. And to have our attendance kind of be down this year when our students are at home, both when we were under hybrid and, and now under distance learning, I'm, I'm checking that attendance every day and figuring out by grade, like, how many of our kids didn't, didn't check into their first period class? And I'm, I'm finding that it's, it's about twenty percent. And I, it needs to, it needs to improve. And so that's, that's the thing. I thought we would, we would do a little bit better than that since when we started distance learning last year, we, we were just knocking it out of the park.
Yeah. And I'm, just the feedback I can give you on that is that this is so much harder for kids to do this year than last year because you have to, like, Lauren had, Lauren knows that eleven forty-seven or whatever that exact time is, right? She has to be up there. And if all of a sudden it's eleven forty-eight and she misses it, you know? So we're expecting a lot more out of our students this year as, as well, and I know why we are. But I know my kids do a mad dash upstairs sometimes, thirty seconds into their class. So the struggle is real there for sure. And they're like, Mom, why didn't you tell me? And I'm like, hey, manage yourself, bro. But thank you, Principal Nutter. I just really am super proud to be a Northside family and have my daughter be at your school and with your staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Al, do you have any questions?
I don't really have a lot of, or a bunch of questions, but I just want to say a nice job. I appreciate seeing what's going on there. I had three kids, four kids go through North. And when they get to that age, they do tend to struggle a little bit, so I really like to see the focus on SEL. If there's an age where they need it, it's probably that middle grade level student that is looking for the additional support. And so I think that anything that we do there and any kind of support that we can give is very beneficial for those students. But nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone here have questions? Monica, you can start us off.
Thank you so much, Principal Nutter, for, for the presentation. I do love the stories. Thank you a lot for doing that. Thank you a lot for doing that. Have a couple of data questions and a couple of other things. So one of the things is that I was looking at your slide about the demographics that you have students in, like 70% of the students in free and reduced lunch, third category, there are three categories, DASP and EL. And I was wondering, how do you use that data and how many students, if you know, and I don't expect you to know right now, but maybe you do, are in the three categories? So I was wondering about those percentages of the students in the three categories and what is different for those students?
Yeah, I don't know the numbers right offhand, you know, as they correlate to their percentages. And then as far as, what was the second part of the question? I'm sorry.
What do you do different for those students that are in the three categories or in two of them?
Yeah, so I'm, we have some of the largest staffing departments in the building, so we have a fairly significant special ed population, students receiving special education services. It's the largest department in our building. So it's staffed to support the students. And then when we talk about the students that are receiving multilingual instruction, it's similar. So we have 5.5 staff members that are specifically dedicated to providing multilingual instruction. And then we have a multilingual para as well. And then something else that I've done this year is we have a Dreamline coach who is bilingual Somali and she supports that newcomer program two hours a day because we don't have a Somali para in that program. So she's able to provide additional support to students in there. So just knowing that we have a larger number of students that need that support. I've also been cognizant of that in my staffing. And so as I've hired staff over the last year and a half at North, I'm making sure that the staff I'm hiring are going to be the people that are going to be able to best serve our students. And so I have been fortunate to be able to hire several multilingual staff members who have been able to provide additional support inside and outside of the classroom. It's been hugely beneficial to us. We have a bilingual clerical worker now who's able to greet families at the front desk when they come into the North building, which has been absolutely huge. She's able to take phone calls from families as well that call in. We have, of course, the ABCSS that does absolutely great work with our Somali community and is very well respected in the Somali community. So just just being able to have the right staff to meet the needs of our students and our families is probably the biggest thing that I can do with with that information.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I really like what you were saying and I kudos for you to having some clerical stuff that are bilingual and I'm guessing that you're talking about Somali. Then it seems like for what you said, that at least for EL, the main languages that you have are Somali, Spanish, and Chinese. But I am guessing that your families, since we have about 42 language and home languages at home, your families might have a lot more languages. So so but so I'm guessing your majority is Somali, is that correct?
That is correct. And I guess one of the trends that we have probably been seeing is more of the ELs that we have been seeing in the last couple of years have have been Spanish speaking. So the newcomer program kind of reflects that in that 12 of the students are Spanish speaking and only five Somali.
Yeah, that takes me to another comment. I wanted to give you kudos for the English multilingual program for recent arrivals. And I'm going to extend my kudos to Lori. I'm pretty sure that that has something to do with that. That is not that, I mean, if you ask me, and a second language learner, it's not that kids, after you learn how to talk, it's not that they learn better if they understand what they explain to them, is that they actually learned. I don't think that I could have learned English as an adult if they will tell me, if they would just throw me into an immersion and hope that it sticks. And I think that that's what we do sometimes with kids. Actually, that happens when they're little, but but doesn't happen when we pass that certain age. And really, I'm hoping to see, I have a lot of hopes for that program that you talk about and I'd like to see more about how you do evaluation. I mean, it's just it's just exciting to see that and to see that we have that in our schools. Lori, do we have that in in South too?
We decided to start it on the North side of the district because that's where we are seeing more of our newcomers. Kelly Frankenfield actually has joined us and this was Kelly's vision and Kelly's dream to be able to start. So she is on with us and hearing your praise and your kudos for being able to start a program like that, we're really excited for it. So it's at both North and Apollo this year, serving both North and South side, but housed on the North side.
And that's great that you actually have the possibility to help the one Chinese student that is not in one of the main languages there and then also have that possibility to make that connection. So that's really wonderful, great, great thing. So I wanted to give you kudos for that. The other thing is that the social and emotional team, something that it sounds like is new is that that is newly built this way. I know that we have had social emotional education for a while, but the team, as you describe it, sounds new to me. Is that right and how are you evaluating that?
I would say it's not entirely new. So the addition of deans was was new last year. And then I would, Ellen, who is on the call here, she, I would say, probably started the SEL program at North if it wasn't in place before she got there. I don't know how far back in the history it goes, but there was a smaller SEL team before I was hired. The deans were added to the team when I was hired. So I was fortunate to be able to hire and pick those deans that I thought would be best serve the North community. And then as part of growing that team, seeing the importance of the work that they do, have included the special ed BRS in that team to make sure that we're not excluding staff and students based on who they're assigned to serve based on duty title. So we have one SEL team. We don't have one for our special, our students that receive special services and another one for our general ed. We're one team and we serve all of our students. So I would say part of it is new and part of it was in place prior to me arriving at North. How I evaluate it is with the survey questions, like we saw with the student survey, the behavior data that if we were to compare our referral data from, you know, year to year, from, you know, the year prior to last school year, we would see a reduction in the number of major referrals. I don't know if we had a reduction in this, or not, I'd have to look at that. But I measure it in those things. The deans, I can say, have been a huge, a huge benefit to have one dean at each grade level. We are looping our deans like some elementary school teachers do when they loop classes and they keep the same kids from year to year for a two, three year period. So in the case of our deans, our sixth grade dean, Bill Cruz, he was the eighth grade dean last year. And so Michelle Hummerding, who was our sixth grade dean last year, she's our seventh grade dean this year. So she has all the same kids. So they get to make, establish and maintain connections over a longer period of time with those students. And I'm real excited to see how we're going to be able to continue to reduce student behavior and increase positive school climate based on the relationships that our SEL team members are making with students and then in turn, that having an impact in our classroom and fewer behavior incidents in the classroom, which should increase our academic achievement.
And whose idea was that about moving the deans with the grades?
Whose idea was it? Was that the question? That was an idea that I had and I, at the time last year, my assistant principal was Heather Ebner and we discussed it and we thought that it would be a good idea to have them maintain longer lasting relationships with students than to continually have them have a new batch of students each year. And so between the two of us, I made that decision and said, yep, we're going to, we're going to move with it and broke the news to my deans who, to my surprise, thought it was also a great idea because I think they value having a deeper connection with their students than getting a new a new batch of students every year.
Well, that's great. Kudos to you. I'm looking at Lori Putnam right now on the screen and having her taking note of that because I've been asking for the evaluation of how that goes and see if something that we can implement this statewide. Sounds like a model of big brothers, big sisters to me. And in the theory and research about big brothers, big sister, the one thing that tells me is that a mentoring relationship that is not long enough is worthless. So that's, 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 that's great about that. So I'm glad to give you another kudos with that one. I, I love that they be the I in kind sign and doing that. So thank you for doing that. Love it. And I also wanted to tell Sylvia, that thing about growth as the state asked, Kate, and that explanation that you gave to Natalie, I did not get a word that you said. I don't want you to tell me again. Could you please send me that information in the email? And I wanted to really understand better, what is the difference between the state evaluation and what we do because that was interesting to know that it was set by the state and I didn't realize that before.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you, Mr. Principal Nutter, for that presentation. It was an excellent snapshot of the, your team, your dedication to leadership. Can you speak to me about attendance and realistic expectations of how you can get it back up to acceptable levels? How do you do that?
Yeah, so communicating the expectation of in class every day to our students is is one of the ways we're going to tackle that. So our deans have been on their Schoology pages every day, making sure that students are logging in. But only those students that are logged into Schoology are seeing those messages. And so they've started calling home. And so now we're starting to move into an area where we're going to have to do that almost on an hour by hour basis. So we are operating under a synchronous model. So we do expect our students to be online and in class at the bell schedule that we followed when we were in school. And so we will get real time data. We are expecting all of our teachers to take attendance the first 10 minutes of each class period. And provided we're all getting that done when we're supposed to, we'll get data almost immediately and we'll be able to start making calls to those students that are not in class when they should be. Part of the problem that we are running into as we're beginning to make these calls is we don't frequently get through to a family member during the day who can check on their student to make sure that they're online. So we are trying to be as creative as we can. Phone calls first. If we don't reach a phone call, we'll send an email if there's an email on file. I would imagine to those that we do start to see habitual absences from, we'll do some home visits to check on those students. Like I said, we do have some nonlicensed SEL staff and other nonlicensed staff who are working hard to support our students in small groups. And attendance is just going to be one of those things that will be on their plate to try and impact for the students.
Thank you.
Zach, do you have any questions? All right, it's my turn, I guess. Thank you for a nice presentation, Principal Nutter. I come from a very, very, very large Northside family who all went to North. I actually have a younger sister named Barb. She's heard that North was on tonight, so she's watching this presentation, God forbid, all the way from Clearwater, Florida. So and she went on to be a principal and I think it's during her years at North that she really found her way in education. So thank you for continuing that great model. I also wanted to read part of the stuff that was on the consent agenda. Donations to North Junior High for school supplies from Atonement Lutheran Church. Teas for staff from Wait Fusion for teacher appreciation. School supplies from Knights at Columbus. $30 from Sarah and Sean Jennings for general building needs. 10 hotspots from Jim and Sue Keller for student use. Donations from the Cup Family Foundation from Random Acts of Kindness Program, $1,500. Those things to me speak volumes of you as a principal and your staff, how you reach out to the community. So kudos for that. I think that speaks volumes. Great presentation. That's all I got. Thank you.
Hold on.
Oh, really? Sorry.
I was waving.
Okay.
Because the lights. The lights went off where I was, so I had to like stand up for the motion. So what I wanted to say is Principal Nutter does a marvelous job and we are completely and definitely fortunate to have him here in District 742. I was, I was glad he actually took credit for the looping of the deans. He actually took credit for that. Because he's modest, he's humble, he's relationship focused, and but the biggest thing is he gets results. And so just need to say, Brian, thank you for what you do. When you walk into North, it feels good. And young people are connected to adults and that is the number one thing and I'm just, we're just fortunate to have you as part of District 742. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item number B, School Updates. It's going to be presented by Dr. Marcia Baish, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education. Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education.
Good evening, Chair Polri, Superintendent Jett, members of the board, and community members joining via live stream this evening. The Apollo Eagle mascot kicks us off this evening with a big hello. You may recall my sharing with you last winter that a task force of kindergarten teachers worked to develop expectations for play-based learning in all of our kindergarten classrooms. Teachers were eager this fall to begin incorporating play into a kindergarten student's daily learning. With COVID, however, some adjustments to how that takes place have been made. But as you can see in these fabulous, beautiful faces of kindergarten students, that across the district, they are engaging in play-based learning daily and thoroughly enjoying themselves. These amazing second grade Kennedy students have found a very creative way to practice their spelling words and, I might add, end up with a very clean desktop when they're finished. If you've ever used shaving cream to practice writing or spelling, it smells great and in the end, your desktop or tabletop is spotless. So get to accomplish two things at once here. Also at Kennedy, teachers and students took advantage of the warm weather days this fall to read in the garden, do sidewalk chalk math, and engage in independent work time. Days that we wish were here after the last couple of days of snowfall, correct? On this slide, you see a picture of fifth grade Discovery students engaged in an art project called Me and My Mask. Art teacher Denise Feisie provided an opportunity for students to see that wearing a mask could be pretty cool and that it was now just part of the school culture. Despite having to follow six feet social distancing protocols, second grade Oak Hill teacher Christina Tykenski has found a very creative and fun way for her students to engage in independent reading. Ms. Tykenski purchased lights to adhere to the underside of students' desks. And as you can see in these photos, students enjoy sprawling out under their desks to read. Fifth grade students at Kennedy are proudly sharing the notes that they've received from their pen pals at the Woodcrest Assistant Living Center in St. Joe. Students used to interact in person once a month, playing games and so on when they would go visit seniors. However, due to COVID, they now interact monthly through correspondence with an individual pen pal. Students get to practice engaging in the good old fashioned arts of letter writing. And this year, we are very fortunate to partner with Camp Invention to provide at-home learning kits for elementary students in the Young Scholars Program. Each student will receive two at-home kits. One will focus on inventing a device to pick up toxic slime and the other will be a high-tech robot that students can use to code. And the other will be a high-tech robot that students can use to code, create and problem solve. These materials are a value of over twenty thousand dollars. And seventeen thousand five hundred of that cost was offset by Camp Invention. Additionally, four talent development specialists will be participating in Camp Invention professional development. And those teachers will receive additional invention materials to use with students in their classrooms. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Putnam.
Thank you very much. Good evening Chair Polaris, members of the Board of Education. Um, tonight I'd like to cover the way that, uh, sec- as secondary schools, we prepared for distance learning, uh, both instructionally and in terms of social emotional wellness. Uh, you'll see examples from most, from almost all of our secondary schools this evening. Um, as you are aware, uh, last spring we heard from our students, families and staff that they wanted more consistency, rigor, structure and opportunities for social emotional connection. We promised our community a new version of distance learning, distance learning 2.0. And I want to take this opportunity to show how we've begun to fulfill that promise because we just began on Monday. Uh, our secondary team has made concerted efforts to create system-wide learning structures and expectations along with SEL supports. The image that you see, uh, here is the home screen that now pops up for all secondary students on their Chromebooks, uh, thanks to Ryan Cox and his team. Um, this, uh, as soon as students open their laptops, uh, they have access to all of the links, um, that they need, uh, immediately to be successful, uh, for distance learning. Uh, many of our teachers have also reached out to families describing what to expect in their classes during distance learning. They covered like when students should be online, when assignments are due and what their grading practices are during distance learning. Uh, we shared exemplars of this community, of these kinds of communications with all of our teachers, um, so that instructors knew what they could and should, and should be sharing with our families. Uh, here you can see, uh, the bottom right corner. Um, you can see media specialist Andrea Tellega and a couple of students. Um, that's her mobile book cart. And, uh, this was right before we went on distance learning. And so you can see, um, she was out roaming the halls of Apollo, looking for takers, uh, for, uh, reading material to take home. And as you can see, she found some students here. Um, we wanted to make sure our students had, uh, books for pleasure, um, along with any textbooks that they needed prior to leaving us, uh, for the, the time being. Um, and then this other picture is, uh, one of our teachers, Josh Cosat. Uh, he is, is out, uh, collecting, uh, materials for his cooking classes, um, so that he had materials to be able to send home. I'm assuming he did not send home the, the life, the fish, um, but he was preparing so that he would be able to have the materials he needed to do distance learning, um, for our fax classes. And that he did actually was able to send home, uh, materials with our students. And these are, these are some screenshots from, um, uh, science classes at Kennedy. Um, these are, you can see in the top, uh, left-hand corner, um, that this teacher actually gave concrete examples of what the workspaces should look like for students, what supplies are needed. Um, and when students are expected to log in, you can see the schedule. And the bottom right, it may be hard to read, um, but it's an outline of what the behavior expectations are for distance learning, like muting your mics, um, being kind with, with comments. Um, and then you can also see the, the day's learning agenda. Ryan, this is an example of, um, information that we, uh, Apollo provided to their students. As you can see, Apollo is providing, uh, virtual support sessions. And then you can see, um, it, these are being offered by grade, uh, twice a day. Um, and then there are also some upcoming events, um, that will happen over lunches and on Fridays. And we're going to talk a little bit more about Friday shortly. Thank you. Uh, here's an example of how South is keeping students connected. Uh, they have a virtual cafeteria so that if students choose to, they can eat together, um, over lunch. And our, we've got, you can see the three staff members that are hosting, um, those lunch sessions. And then at the bottom are, um, links for our after-school support. And that, uh, those that you can see are provided in English, Spanish and Somali. This next example is, um, from our Distance Learning Academy. Um, Principal Ebner was a champion of, of making social connections across schools. Um, and so these are, are, um, Friday events, um, that happen across South, North and Distance Learning Academy. There are social chat rooms and there's a, a schedule, um, uh, in the afternoon, uh, when students have some independent work time and our teachers are doing, uh, uh, collaborative planning and individual planning and meetings like MTSS and other, uh, building-wide, um, supports that are necessary to keep our students supported. Um, so you can see that the, the, uh, examples of, of what students are possibly talking about. There's a current events, um, Officer Gangel from North is hosting Talk Talk with a Cop, um, music, video games and sports. And those, uh, um, can change depending on students' interest and needs. And then, um, Heather and Ryan are also looking to host a virtual trivia nights. Um, and I'm sure they would be welcoming any guest hosts, um, if our board members would like to, to join. And this next, thank you, this next slide, yep, go ahead, Ryan, um, is, you can see screenshots from a video that was made by our tech admin team. Um, it was shown to all of our students and is available on the website. It's about seventeen minutes long, um, if any of you would like to watch it. Um, but it covers the what, the why and the how of distance learning. Uh, one thing I thought was really neat is that Principal Harris explained to students, um, what our county data was, um, why exactly we were making this transition and what students could expect and how they could be successful. Um, you can see the Principal Harris has that learning goal of, of, we're getting ready to be prepared for, to distance learning. Um, at, uh, Tech, they are doing, uh, making sure that grade levels stay connected. Each grade level has its own school ag page, um, where they post updates and students can interact socially. Um, and then their SEL teams that you've heard about, uh, from, uh, Principal Nutter, um, are actually making connections with, with students once per week. And again, like I said at the beginning, that's not just happening at Tech, that is happening across our secondaries. It's just featured here on the, on this page. Um, Friday, Apollo and Tech are, as I said, are, are doing, um, cut Friday conversations, much like the middle. Um, and you can see examples that, uh, the, of the tech talks, they're going to be featuring career speakers, um, college exploration opportunities, job fairs, and then equity and lunch groups that students can choose to join. And then the bottom right-hand side is, um, Assistant Principal Sandoval talking, showing examples of, um, uh, NHS tutoring that's happening by subject and how students can sign up for that. And then one really innovative, uh, brand new thing, or another innovative, brand new thing, um, that is being, uh, that began at North and, um, is going to be expanded is a virtual reset room. So as you know, many, uh, our high schools and our middle schools have, uh, focus rooms or reset rooms. And so we knew that just because students weren't in our, in our walls, or possibly because students aren't within our walls, um, they're still going to need a safe space to go where somebody can help them calm and reset so that they can get back into class, um, and be ready to learn. So we are, um, launching, uh, this is the example of the North Reset Room, uh, where students can drop in. And then there are some ideas about how, um, they can calm themselves, some visual relaxation, um, music and sounds and some mindfulness opportunities. And that is of course staffed by, um, our SEL teams, social workers, um, and counselors. And then this last slide, go ahead, thank you. You can see that we're still having fun. Um, for Apollo, Kennedy and North, it is our, um, it was their stay-at-home coming week. Um, and so you, they had, uh, dress-up days, this top right, uh, picture, you can see Principal Nutter, um, was doing, uh, he's dressed up for his Zoom fit day. Um, so he's zoom appropriate on top and he actually had shorts on in a very cold day on the bottom. And then he's got his, sporting some of his Hawaiian gear. Um, all of our schools, uh, recognize Unity Day this, this week, um, in honor of, um, Safe and Supportive Schools and Anti-Bullying. Um, they are still, um, are, Apollo did their virtual coronation. You can see, uh, the king and the queen down on the bottom right. Um, and then they're still doing, uh, they did some virtual Olympics at Apollo. So we're still finding ways to have fun, stay connected, um, and continuing to, um, make sure our kids are engaged and learning. We welcome questions, comments.
All right, we'll start with you Natalie, if you have any.
Um, no, I don't have any, but thanks for, um, all those pictures and for showing us what it looks like, um, within the walls and within the cloud. Appreciate it.
Al?
No, no question.
Monica?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, uh, both of you. I, I, I love the, I love the, the shaving cream thinking for spelling, that's great. I did, um, love those things that you're doing for all the virtual staff, Lori, for the high school students. I am very interested in learning about the evaluation of distance learning, how is it going to go? Um, we just started, so I'm, I'm not expecting you to tell me an evaluation right now, tell me how it goes. It seems like, like you have good in practice, a lot of things that you have learned from there. Eh, 1.1 or 1.0, whatever you call it. And then, eh, so, so, so yes, eh, I will be hoping that you give us an evaluation maybe towards December, I think, to see how, how is that doing, how is, how kids are, are coping with it now. Um, so thank you very much.
Bless, any questions? Jana?
We interrupt the creativity. I love the virtual lunchtime and all of your other ideas. So thank you for that social aspect that you're trying to fill.
Good, Jen? Zach, any questions or comments? You're good? Um, I just had, well, very good presentation, thank you to both of you. Um, Lori, could you tell me what the three areas of that presentation that Principal Harris created at Tech? The who, how, why, whatever it was?
Yeah, he started out, um, with explaining to students about, um, why we had to transition to distance learning, um, because our kids and our staff had just settled into a nice routine, um, in terms of hybrid. And so, um, you know, uh, one thing I really loved about it was, um, Principal Harris treated, uh, and addressed the students like the young adults that they are. And was just very straightforward about, about the reality that we face. Um, but then he went into, and along with his team, uh, went into how they were going to support, um, our students. They were very clear about what the expectations are. You heard that from Principal Nutter, um, and all of our, all of our staff have done this. Uh, Jason just did a beautiful job on that video, um, you know, logging in first 10 minutes. This is if, if you're not there, you're going to get the chew and see call and just, so, so that there are no surprises for our students. Um, and then they went through, um, in, in depth, all of the supports that are available, um, instructionally as well as in terms of SEL, um, the social emotional supports.
Thanks. Is it possible to add another section to that, like when, when we're going to be back to normal? Or when distance learning won't be needed?
You know, that's a great question, um, Chair Polaris. And I got so excited about, um, the, about wrapping up that I forgot that I was supposed to turn the presentation over to Superintendent Jett. And so, uh, that's a perfect segue into Superintendent Jett.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Chair Polaris, members of the board, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And nice job Marcia and Lori for the schools update. And I also like to say thank you for, to our students, our families, our teachers, our staff and the administrators who are working so hard at this point in time. I know our community may be wondering about next steps for our schools regarding transitions between learning models. I've had people ask, will elementary schools transition to distance learning? And when will secondary schools return to hybrid learning? Recently, we were made aware that MDE plans to provide new guidance to school districts around how and when to transition between learning models. This information could or should be available in the next couple of weeks. And since this new information is potentially coming and we will, with that, we would hold on discussing or giving the precise when that would happen, um, until we have the actual facts. And so that, I know that, uh, Chair Polaris, you asked a question just one second ago in terms of, I think you were talking about transition, so that's why I made sure that I was speaking at that time.
Thank you Superintendent. I'll hold my comments because I'd probably say something politically incorrect.
You, you, I understand.
And those guidelines seem to be very fluid and often changing, but.
Yep. I also believe that, uh, remember Dogren, I see that he's unmuted, so. Al?
So I received a, a question from a person today and I, I did forward it to you Willie so you could read the whole question. But, uh, the gist of the question was, um, with, with, uh, cases climbing up over thirty in Stearns County, uh, that push into a distance learning model for secondary?
No question.
Is, uh, Benton County and some of the other counties surrounding us have also climbed over thirty. Um, but schools within Stearns County and within Benton County aren't all choosing to go to distance learning. And, uh, a person was wondering if you could explain the decision-making process a little bit so that they could understand why some schools are and some schools.
Yep. And so Chair Polaris? I'm just listening because Chair Polaris is not muted.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Bless's computer is going to die and trying to find a power cord for him.
There's somebody on the way to take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, so Al, I'm just making sure I understand the question. The, the question was about the, um, decision-making process and comparing or talking about the schools within Stearns County, correct? And what we do, got it, okay. So with that being said.
counties that are above thirty.
Got it, okay. So we all started the school year out, um, you just say in August or the beginning of school year, all schools across the state were, you use the executive, um, Safe Orders of Act from the governor. And we all, that was, that was the starting point, okay? And we all understood at that time that we were supposed to go by numbers, by those county numbers. And every school district, that's, you started your initial, excuse me, your initial learning model from, based on that. And super, superintendents all across the state, districts all across the state, that's what we were used, that's what we were told to use. And then, um, I'm, I'm sitting here on, 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 during this meeting. And I'm not going to say people challenged it, but let's just say districts across the state, people had questions about that. Then as rates started rising throughout the state of Minnesota, and then many of us said, well, it's, it's based on county numbers. Then we were informed from MDE and MDH, um, as you're getting ready to change learning models, that they wanted you to take in, now it became three different components. So the three components out were the county numbers, the impact on the county, and then the impact on your operations or on your sites. And so for us, when we, um, did the distance learning, we made that, that call to go to distance learning, we took into account all three of those. So we had the county numbers that were above the thirty. The county numbers were above thirty for more than, you know, a week or two or three. And they told us what the prediction was going to be. And we can see the prediction for the county is going to be in the forties at the end of this week. So that was one. Second, we talked to our local county officials. So for us, our local county health officials, let me clarify that. And for us, that was Centra Care. And Centra Care, um, had conversations with our staff, talking about, um, hospitalizations and ICUs and things of that nature and the impact, um, from their perspective. And then the third was the impact within our sites or within our buildings. And we have eighteen out of nineteen sites, um, have been impacted. We have, you look at our dashboard and we have 500 students and anywhere from, I believe it's somewhere around thirty students to, not students, thirty to eighty faculty members or staff members impacted on a daily basis. So with those three, um, factors, that's how we, um, that's how we chose to go to distance learning. That is confusing, as Chair Polaris said earlier, uh, um, he was being politically correct in terms of when he said things seem to be changing or the game seems to be changing, um, or the rules of the game seem to be, that's more important, the rules of the game seem to be changing, um, as you are in the middle of it. And so that is why I mentioned earlier that there is supposedly, and I'm not going to say supposedly, we were told as superintendents that within the next week or two, there's going to be this definitive, um, guidance coming from the state, talking about when to switch or when to change learning models, the how and the when and the why. And that's as superintendents all across the state of Minnesota, we're all screaming it. Um, because it seems to be left out in the lurch, um, not to talk about the other districts within Stearns County. But I think it will be interesting for people to pay attention to county nu- oh, nope, specific numbers for other districts across, um, Stearns County, um, this week. And that's, Al, that's, that's the, that's the answer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you much. We will go on to our discussion items. Item number three A is Proposed Revised Board Policy Number 414. It's up for a second reading. It's going to be done by Tracy Flynn Bowe, Executive Director of Human Resources. No action is needed tonight.
Good evening. Good evening Chair Polaris, board members, Superintendent Jett. This is a second reading of board policy.
This is a second reading of Board Policy 414. That is our mandatory reporting policy. I'm sure everyone on the board understands that all employees of the school district are mandatory reporters for child abuse or neglect, and this is the policy that, for the most part, follows the state statutes and all those reporting requirements and gives employees guidance on how that process works. So we reviewed last week, or last board meeting, the changes that are being proposed. They are all consistent with the MSBA updates to the model policy, and then updating the, you know, phone numbers and contact information for our local county officials and, and, and social services agencies. So if there are any questions about those, there has been nothing changed since the last meeting. I'm happy to take any questions.
All right. Natalie, any questions?
No, thank you, Tracy.
Al?
Nope, none.
Monica? Les? All right, thank you, Tracy. Very well done.
Thanks, Ryan.
With that, we will move on to item number 3B, it's Proposed Revised Board Policy Number 806. It's also up for a second reading. It's gonna be done by Gary Ganji, Executive Director of Operations, and once again, no action is needed tonight.
Right, so, so as you recall, we looked at 806, last, the last board meeting, excuse me, and, and there were not any changes suggested at the last meeting. This is our, our crisis management policy. The, the proposed changes are pretty minded. The, the first one is adding a paragraph describing our EPAC or our, our Community Committee, and then the, the rest of the changes are, are just basically aligning with terminology that we're currently using. And, and as I mentioned last time, that, that this policy is really homegrown. It's our first responders from our community worked hard on developing this policy, and it's, it's a, a document that, that has a lot of ownership across the community. And I will take any questions.
Natalie?
None for me, thanks, Gary.
We'll skip Al. Monica?
None.
Oh, you're back?
None here.
Any questions? Okay. Monica? All right. Thank you very much, Gary. Next, we will go on to item number four, it's the reports. We'll start off with our Superintendent Willie Jett, Superintendent of District 742 Schools. If you're there, Willie, your mic is muted.
Yes, it was muted, and my apologies for that. So I first and foremost want to say, congratulations to Apollo Senior Ethan Logeman, who scored a perfect 36 on his ACT exam. For anybody that's ever taken that exam, 36, 36 is spectacular, it's a perfect score. You don't see that very often throughout the entire country, so congratulations to Ethan. Second, Ms. Ashley Torelli has set a new tech high school record with 168 wins. She, she surpassed all tech history records as it relates to tennis. What I want to say is she surpassed all of her sisters. That's the way I really probably need to phrase that. And so I need to say congratulations to Ashley. She had an outstanding career, and from what I understand, there's another one, another sister coming up that is starting even younger, and so we shall see how long these records last. And lastly, we had two Apollo cross-country seniors, and they qualified for the state meet, and they qualified from sections. Mr. Sam Brewer finished runner-up in the race and was the top individual qualifier. Tucker 1040 finished ninth place overall and was the fifth individual qualifier for state. I'm smiling when I say that last name, because as I look at it, it looks at, as, as if I see a sign on the back of a truck or cars, Tucker 1040, and, and so I'm sure that there's some kind of relation there. So I'd like to say congratulations to those two cross-country runners from Apollo High School. And that is my quick superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you much. Al, did you see the text? Do you still have a question?
No, I do not. I asked it.
Okay.
That one.
Got it. All right, we will, nope, we'll move on to community reports, and yes, Al, you would be first. Go ahead, please.
So Finance Committee met on October 20th, just a couple days ago, and we had three items on the agenda. The first one was just a site maintenance update. Matt Plumboff was there remotely for the meeting, and we just had a fairly lengthy discussion on what we've been doing. We, we got an update on what's been happening in the district as far as, and we're talking about exterior maintenance of the school buildings and grounds, but what's, what has been happening this year, and then what our thoughts are going into next year. And I wanna give kudos to Matt and his team, because they, I hope that you noticed, I hope that you all noticed, this past summer, there was a huge improvement in our site maintenance, just in our groundskeeping, in the way that our buildings look. We made a number of improvements. We, we specifically focused on Apollo this year, with the, that was our, that was the number-one focus, but things such as removing the rust from the building, working to have the sprinkler system, get it fixed, which it wasn't working very well, and it was the source of all of our rust problems. But that was a huge part. We replaced fencing at Apollo. In all of the grounds, in all of the schools, we put a lot of focus on doing a little bit better with weed control, and then mowing and trimming. And I will have, and I do have to say that I saw a huge improvement in the schools as far as mowing and trimming and just making them look good. And there are some other areas that we talked about for next year that really need to be focused on. One of, one of those is to continue on weed control and try to at least get around the school buildings to look nice and green and flush and not full of weeds and dandelions. Make sure that we have a consistent plan and we don't fall off on our, on our grass mowing, so we don't get a couple of weeks that go by when we're short on, on groundskeeping for a school or something, and all of a sudden, we've got foot-long grass. And then parking lots, we've been, we did a few parking lots this year. Painting, we painted some buildings, really cleaned them up this year. There's just, there's been a lot going on, and I will say to Matt and his team that our schools look 100% better, and I, and I think that that will even be improved upon next year. So that was our first, that was our first item on our agenda. The second item on the agenda was Board Policy Number 740. It was being presented to the Finance Committee to see if we wanted to move it forward to the Board Policy and Governance Committee to come forward to the Board. And 740 is the, the state, or the requirement of what, how much money can our finance department spend without coming to the Board to get approval? The state statute on that is that they can spend up, that they should not have to come to the Board up to $175,000. When we wrote our policy, that number was $100,000, and so the change that we're looking at is to take the statute from $100,000, anything over $100,000 has to come to the Board, and bringing that up to $175,000. And the Finance Committee, all of us agreed that it was the right thing to do. It helps to speed up some projects. There, there are projects that get behind, and I know we've had many discussions surrounding policies and how to, how to speed up the policy approval processes. But the, the free infrequency of our board meetings slows things down, and if Amy's got a contract or she needs to act on something, and she has to wait for it to go through Finance Committee and then the following board meeting before she can get approval, sometimes that window just isn't there, and $175,000 really, for a district our size, that's not, that's not an, that's not that. It, it's a lot of money. I'm not saying it's not a lot of money, but it's not something that someone with the skill set and knowledge that someone like Amy and Gary and Willie have, that they shouldn't be able to make those decisions without that. So that, that will be going to the Policy Governance Committee meeting, Shannon, I don't know if we'll want to look at it at the one next week. I, I don't think it would take us very long, so we might just want to add it there, and then it'll, if, if, if we agree there to bring it forward, then it'll come to the next board meeting for a first reading. The last item on the agenda was the CARES funding update, and really, Amy just reported that there hasn't been a lot of changes to CARES, CARES Act money that's available to us. We're still waiting for approval from Surburne County, and that's about all. There, there just wasn't much of anything to report as far as changes in CARES Act funding. That was our meeting, it was lots of money.
Thank you, Al. As part of the Finance Committee too, I'd like to echo your kudos and thanks to Matt and his team. I noticed all the changes too, it's really looking nice. Next up would be Personnel Negotiations Committee, Chair Les Green.
I'm gonna be giving...
Monica's standing in, okay.
I'm gonna be giving the report for Les Green, because he's having technical difficulties, he's here next to me. So the Personnel Committee report, we, we met on November, on October 7th, and we discussed the Superintendent Evaluation, Superintendent Evaluation process. We also just, eh, eh, discussed the COVID-19 personal data dashboard that has been already exposed to us and presented. Health and Safety Coordinator position is a new job description that was, eh, discusses the HR reporter that the position of the district engineer with the Health and Safety responsibilities is being eliminated, and the district is posting, hiring a Health and Safety Coordinator. The COVID-19 pandemic and other issues highlighted in the importance of this position and the need for a dedicated coordinator to support Health and Safety responsibilities, so that's what the position was about, and we kind of discussed that. We discussed that, no, kinda. We reviewed Board Policy 414, that is Strike Online Policy attach, eh, that, I don't remember when did we look at that, did we look at that today? Eh, Tracy? The Board Policy 414? Yep, that's the one that we had today, exactly. And then the impact of, of the chief of to distance learning in non-licensed employee groups, we, we checked, we discussed that part two. Our next meeting is scheduled for November 4th, and I do have a question for all the board members present. We do need to set up a special meeting for the, for the Superintendent Evaluation. This is a closed meeting that we have usually called at the end of one of our sessions, but the Personnel Committee really recommends that we set up that meeting not at the end of one of current sessions, because we are really tired at that moment and, and really burned out. So we are proposing that we have this meeting either in November 15 or November, oh, I'm sorry, November 11 or November 12 in the morning. So I'd like to ask you, each one of you, if you have your calendars with you, and if you, and if we can set that, your times right now for that. And then after we have that closed session for that meeting, the next meeting will be the report to the public about the Superintendent Evaluation, but that is, has been traditional for us to, to review what we have gotten. A little bit more of details of the Superintendent Evaluation this year. We have, have an external consultant that has helped us to do the survey with every, everyone, we have discussed within our committee what responsibilities, different board members in our committee are going to take about reviewing and checking this information. We have a very nice report today about it, eh, from this consultant, and that's what we will be discussing with you all in that closed session about details of that evaluation, so we can have an evaluation give to the public. So I'm hoping that what I couldn't say, what time does I work on the 11th of the 12? If I may, Chair Polaris, can I, can I call, can I roll call for that question?
I'm gonna have Les send it out in an email. We won't do it tonight. Just send an email tomorrow and have everybody respond back to you within the next day.
I'm sorry.
All right.
I'm sorry, Chair Polaris, does that decision that week, so he has to, so everybody's going to email him separate, because, because open meeting law prohibits us from having communication and decisions of the whole board in an email?
Everyone can email him individually, and Willie can send it out to everybody. Give Willie a couple dates.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next up would be the Team of Innovation and Equity Committee chaired by Natalie Reinsten.
Thank you, yes, we met this week. After we had a crazy time of trying to have everyone in the same Google Meet, we finally succeeded and was able to hear from Ellen Stewart, our Equity Director, about an upcoming presentation that she's going to be giving to the Board, and so we were able to hear some great updates, some, talk through some ways we can, that Ellen can share those with us when she comes to the Board, and I'm just really looking forward to that equity update, equity update happening. So thank you, Ellen, and thank you to all members of the committee that were there early in the morning this week. And our next meeting will be in November.
All right. Thank you, Natalie. Next up, item number five, future agenda items. Coming up in the future, we're gonna have, I would believe, Ellen, and others may be doing an Equity Services Update. IMB will be School Update, Activities Update, and COVID Update, and then we will have some more Proposed Revised Board Policies coming our way. If there's no other questions or discussion, it's 8:18, we will now adjourn the school board meeting. Good night, stay warm.